And I think we made a motion for those, please.
A moment.
Thank you, Mr. Hebert. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. There any discussion on those changes? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Abstention from Mr. Barley. Well, actually, we can't have those vote twice. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Twelve. Good. So it's eleven. Zero, one. Very good. Any announcements or communications? In your pack is or handed out was an online public workshop for the Manor County Climate Action Plan. Very good.
So as most of you know, Monroe County is entering the second phase of its climate action plan work. And on March fifteenth, we have two virtual meetings, one at noon and another at six P M. We encourage you not only to attend, but to share this with your network so we can have other people attend as well. This is the beginning of the community engagement for that public facing project. Phase one was previously an inwards county operations plan. This is for countywide, countywide decision making. And I'm happy to take questions on that if anyone has any.
The date on that is the fifteenth?
Correct. Yes. March fifteenth, noon and six. You do have to register in advance, so please do so if you're interested. Potentially down the road. And we'll definitely have pop up events as we've done with the conference plan and the other and the climate action. Excuse me, countywide active transportation plan.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Hearing none, we'll move on to the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement program. And here's Pat again for the presentation.
All right. Is he shown a second to bring it up?
And while she's doing that. Hello, Andre. Come on in. There's a seat. There's one right there. And we need to pass this over to Andre. That'd be great. While the presentation is being is furthering, if you could think of any departments that you'd like to have a presentation or had questions for just keep a side note of that them at the end. So, Yishan, when you're ready.
Okay.
You want to see that presentation?
Hello, everyone. So this is for the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine C I P. We'll go over the schedule, go over the specific department funding. We'll think about as Chairman Santos just mentioned, who we would like to have at further meetings, so that way, if you have any questions, keep those in mind. And then, of course, we have a goal of setting a public hearing for March ninth, so that way we can have the public be aware of this as well. So the typical capital improvement program process is up there. And you'll see right now we are in that red phase, which is that we are working with the the C I P review committee has been working since August to put together the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine C I P program. That C I P program has been refined over those months. And we now, of course, are presenting it to this board, who needs to make sure that they are comfortable with it before they move it on as well. And then, of course, it goes to the county executive and submits that to the county legislature by May first. And then, of course, in July, we hope to have a public hearing for that as well, for the idea of adopting that C I P. And then, the in August, we'll start the cycle all over again, and it will be like deja vu. All right. So just a reminder on how to read the forthcoming tables. So the you'll have a couple of different things in front of you. Some of them will be summary tables, typically similar to Excel documents. Others will be bar charts. Those blue bars are annual totals from the adopted C I P. So that's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight. Red bars are proposed annual totals that are twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine. And then striped bars are the totals for those six-year programs, because the C I P planning program is a six-year planning program. So that way we can think ahead as to our needs and wants. You'll see there proposed funding is shown with red numbers. That is if funding decreased or green numbers if funding increased compared to the adopted C I P. And we have those, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight chart is on the bottom of most slides in blue. Red arrows, I don't believe there's many red arrows this year simply out of time, but I'll note where projects advance and you'll see the number changes as well. And then I believe all the italicized projects are new and I can note those as well. Feel free to ask questions if you have any, and I will, of course, rely on some of the departments represented here today for any specific questions or details about those projects.
Yeah, we used to have arrows and you're showing when projects move right or left. I don't see any.
That's correct. They were not completed this year. But I will note those through this process and we can get a changed version.
It is not completed.
The arrows were just not put on the slides.
Okay. Any reason?
Expediency of time. But what we can do and what we have noted is you'll see that there's red and green next to each other. I'll note most of those where that change occurred, but we can get you a new version if you'd like.
I'd love to see that. That's helpful.
We will get on top of that.
Another question.
Yeah.
Something I brought up. If you look at the twenty twenty-four numbers, they were first introduced in eighteen or nineteen, forget eighteen, I think, twenty eighteen. They've been adjusted or are they still the numbers that were presented in the twenty eighteen?
The numbers are refined each year. So if a project has advanced in any way, the numbers do change. But if the project has not been touched in the sense that the department has reevaluated it, then no, those numbers may remain the same. But as any project goes out to bid or goes to the point of the actual budgeting year, which is in this year is twenty twenty-three, we do have those numbers refined, so that way they're appropriate and ideally matched to inflation, but of course, that has changed a lot in the last year or so.
Yeah, that's what drove my question. We've been seeing lots of substantial increases from what C I P says.
And you'll notice that some of the you'll notice some of the twenty twenty-three years projects are elevated for that exact reason.
I'd agree.
Yeah, exactly. All right. So let me step back. I apologize. So you'll see here, this is a summary table of the proposed versus adopted C I P. This lists the various county funding sources. There are a multitude from county actual essentially tax levy, the district cash from enterprise districts, the private funding that sometimes comes for specific projects. Generally, that is in either MCC transportation. And then you'll also see state and federal funding as well. And that can fluctuate from year to year as different projects are advanced at those levels. Sometimes certain state projects or federal projects are moved ahead, specifically airport projects. They dance around very easily. And then federal projects, as specific funding comes available, a project may move up the C I P to take advantage of that funding.
Where would you find like the zoo funding from the zoo society they were going to?
That would be private as well. And that was listed in, I don't recall seeing it this year, but that's just because that project was advanced and most of that money has technically been spent in the C I P from last year. But when we get there, we can drill down on that. You'll see here that the proposed C I P is sixty-two million dollars less than the adopted C I P, which is about thirteen percent. You can go into the different percentages, but I won't bore you with those details. You have the packets in front of you. And then you'll see there's also percent totals, which is helpful to understand, you know, where the different funding sources come from as well. And these are all things that are considered throughout the C I P review committee's process in order to make sure that the funding is appropriate and we are maintaining ideal funding to make sure we maintain our credit rating and address all of our needs. This is the same chart, but in a pie chart graph or pie chart, excuse me. Just another visual way to represent it and helps to understand in a quick colorful image that county is the lion's share of the or the largest, I should say. All right. All right. Total funds proposed versus adopted C I P. So as I mentioned, it is about sixty-two million dollars less than prior years. Twenty twenty-nine, of course, is the newest in the C I P, so that is always going to have only a red bar rather than a blue bar. And that is ideally where we want to see the most change. That means that we are thinking ahead rather than reacting to situations. But as I mentioned, some situations come up where we have to react accordingly, whether it's for just building maintenance that we cannot defer or we need to address immediately or just grants and other opportunities that present themselves. You advanced that issue? Thank you. So once again, you'll see at the top here, that is the annual funds by source proposed versus adopted. And then below that is the twenty twenty-three summary table. I know it's hard to read. Your PowerPoints are probably better off for seeing this. What you'll see there, that represents once again a reduction of sixty-two million with a total of four hundred and thirty-five hundred. And that is, like I said, down sixty-two million from prior years. Or prior year. The next slide, please. So total federal funds, when I'm referring to sometimes grants for funding shifting in and out. This is one of the slides where that happens. In the out years, the departments do make some estimates about what will be happening in the current year in those out years based on their experience and what they see from year to year. Sometimes there are things that are known, but more often than not, the far out years are their best guesses, which we revise as they know more. And you'll see that total federal funds is slightly lower overall in the proposed C I P. And that is more a reaction to the reduction in the C I P than a reduction in any sort of federal funds that would be coming to us. Yep.
There appears to be a spike here in twenty twenty-four for the federal funds. Is that because of certain programs?
Twenty twenty-four is related to see what that is.
Where you can come back.
I can come back to it, but that is related to a spike in. Oh, that's the MCC funding. I apologize. So there's, of course, MCC. No, that's not MCC. Let me come back to that.
That'd be the, yeah, the next slide.
Let's move to the next one and then we'll come back to that.
We'll figure it out. Okay.
Regarding state funds, so once again, this is what we anticipate for the closer years, those are more knowns, whereas the out years, those are best guesses educated at that. You'll see that aviation is in there. Aviation is a program that, as I mentioned, the way that works, we submit our planned programs to the state. They approve those and they fund those as they have money available and they see priorities. So projects that we may have in the out years may move up to the close years or vice versa, depending on what their priorities are. But in twenty twenty-four, you'll see that spike there. It's about three million dollars. And that is state funds related to MCC and the D O T. So MCC's program is in twenty twenty-four is about eleven point seven million. And D O T has a state fund of one point one four million. So it's really a doubling of state funds related to MCC primarily. All right. Yes. So thank you, Sean. So the twenty twenty-four federal jump is related to D O T. And we'll see another one of those in the out years as well, and we get to their specific program. They received two point two million dollars in funding in, I believe, twenty, the late twenty twenties.
Thank you.
A big drop in twenty twenty-five for state funds. Did you comment on that yet?
I did not, no. So that is twenty twenty-five. The drop in state funds is related to, give me one second to look that up, because I don't have that off the top of my head.
Kind of the MCC advancing the A-Tech.
Yes, that's exactly right. So there's eleven million dollars in state funds in twenty twenty-four, which then falls off the books in twenty twenty-five. Okay. So enterprise funds, this is the next slide, and you'll see here, this is enterprise funds with enterprise cash. You may notice a difference in your C I P booklet in your hands on the summary table. There we list the total enterprise funds without cash, and that's not noted. We will rectify that for the future. The numbers are correct. Everything's good. There's just, it may not be clear to everyone unless you're digging into the numbers every day. And that represents a difference of three point six million between this slide that you see here and the book. And that is simply a D S solid waste enterprise cash that is in the six-year program that is listed here, and like I said, not on the table one summary. All right. So total district funds. Let's see here, district funds, you'll notice in twenty twenty-nine, you know, of course, that's where most of the planning goes. Everything else is pretty static. In twenty twenty-nine, there's eleven projects, which are all under four million. And with the largest two being four million and three million, and then a lot of other projects that fall below that. So that is a pretty typical funding year for district. Total county funds, next slide. So total county funds right here, all departments are county fund, have county funds, except Monroe Community Hospital, the airport and Pure Waters. As you can see, that is relatively static as well, with some, of course, increases, decreases, depending on the year. But overall, that is also a drop as well from two hundred and seventy-nine million to two hundred and nineteen million, which I think as we mentioned, is about sixty million in total. All right. So the total county funds by department. So a little detail on this is, so I S from the proposed, we'll go, we'll walk through each one of these and give you the difference between quickly. In information services, it's up three million. Medical examiner, it's up two hundred and fifty thousand. MCC, it is down seven point two million. The library is up twenty thousand. Facilities is up three point nine million. Parks is up three hundred thousand. The zoo is down forty-seven point five million, largely because of the zoo projects that we have completed. And that was a significant funding that has fallen off, that will fall off the books here. Highway and bridges is down fourteen point eight seven million. Transportation engineering is down one point six million. Public safety is up three point four million. And the sheriffs is up six hundred thousand. So now we're going to walk through department by department. If you have any specific questions about the departments or the projects, I encourage you to ask and make notes, so that way if you would like to have the department representative present, we can do that. You'll see here information services is an increase, but it is flat throughout the years. This is really just related to the increased data needs that all counties have with just every department is using more data than they previously did. Whether that's departments that we may never have thought were doing that to the typical departments that you would think of. And that's an increase of, I think that's five hundred thousand. Yes. All right. So the next is the medical examiner's office. So you'll see there's an increase in twenty twenty-four that is building HVAC upgrades that fell into twenty twenty-four. That is a project that is necessary to do now, and I don't know if you want to say anything about that, Sean, or?
No, it's just additional work that was not inside the original project that was done for the building a couple of years ago, which is more of the medical examiners in the backend.
But that is the only, so that is a new project that was slotted in twenty twenty-four, and that's the change there. And it's, the bar makes it look worse than it is. It is about five hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, excuse me. All right, Monroe Community College. So Monroe Community College, so you'll see here on the large slide that twenty twenty-four increase, that is related to, and we can go to the next slide, but the STEM addition, which was advanced in previous years, so legislator Hebert, this is where you should see arrows from the red arrows going to the left, where the money is being advanced in twenty twenty-four. This project was moved ahead, moved ahead last year and this is the result of that. And generally, I apologize for the arrows not being in here, but the anywhere you see the red and green side by side, that is generally an indication that money was moved from the red year to the green year. Not always the case. There can also be increases, especially in twenty twenty-four, just because of project increases or identifying other needs that have arisen. The other thing you'll note there is that the services for students renovation was essentially pushed back as the STEM addition was moved up. There's, of course, only so many funds to you to work with, so we have to sometimes swap things forward and backwards as needed. Yeah.
So they were doing a master plan that was completed, right? They're starting to implement that. We'll see that in.
Okay. Yeah, and these projects are all, I don't want to say all of them, but most of them are represented, represented in that master plan. It was completed in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah. And is, I know you work with Mr. Franklin's staff a lot to try to maintain a flat, you know, debt. So for these projects, you may push some out with that. Has, is there a problem or has there been a conflict between the study for MCC and trying to maintain an even debt load?
It's not always smooth.
Yeah.
And there's a significant amount of conversation between us and the facilities staff at MCC. They've been pretty, pretty cooperative with us the past several years. I'm exactly happy, but unbelievable.
Yeah, but they have a plan moving forward and they're happy with it. Okay. Thanks.
I would also add that, you know, the the capitals plan that they have, like any planning effort, is the the end goal is not always realistic with what can happen on the ground. And so they understand that, we understand that, and so that is something that we all take into account and we have these considerations.
Right. Thank you.
Can I go back?
Yeah.
Just for a minute.
Which one?
Back as well. The total funds proposed versus adopted C I P. Twenty twenty-three took one twenty-five point two.
I apologize. Can you repeat that, legislature?
Which page are you on?
I'm on our page three, bottom of that slide. My gut tells me that the adopted C I P numbers of twenty twenty-three is a result of the original plans plus all of the additional funds that we had to approve because of inflation and cost billing, materials costs and all that kind of stuff. Is that correct?
I'm not entirely sure of your question.
So when we printed last year's book?
Yep.
Is that one twenty-five the same, or does it include all the boats we've had during the year to?
Oh, I see where you're saying.
Update versus all the bid prices that we, you know, the new prices.
This would be when it was printed as an adopted document, not after the projects go to bid or anything like that. So that number.
July of twenty twenty-two.
So that July twenty twenty-two, exactly.
So this one twenty-five, right? That's the one you're looking at. So that's actually higher.
Substantially higher because of all the adjustments that were made in the C I P over the course of the year.
By the amendments, yeah.
Yes.
I can't speak to it because I don't know with detail, but likely, yes.
Thank you.
What page are you on, George?
So we're on page three.
Six. They're hard to see, but yeah.
Okay.
So, so, so I guess my question. How do we go from one twenty-five and twenty-two hundred and three to just like a proposed eighty-three point five for twenty twenty-four? Man, I don't recall ever seeing that big of delta. Mr. Franklin knows his work. He's pretty flat. He's pretty good at it.
Because the number of projects were advanced from out here into twenty twenty-three.
Right. The zoo and FCC are two examples.
Yeah, right.
The zoo, of course, was multiple.
Again, because and because many of the twenty twenty-four projects won't have been touched until we actually get into that. Any amendments, things like that, that are driven by inflation, building costs and stuff will add to the bars.
Yes. Once again, the C I P is really a planning tool that we use with the, you know, budget year of twenty twenty-four in this situation being the one that we are most worried about the numbers, because that is closest to actually happening in reality.
I understand.
It is a challenge, challenging environment right now. I know Director Franklin and D E S specifically has to deal with the inflation more than anyone. But it is something that they, we work on and we do have conversations during the C I P review committee meetings. Unfortunately, roofs still need to be put on to keep water out, and there's no changing that regardless of inflation.
Yeah. Pat or Mr. Chairman, I'll chime in. The legislator is correct. You're not seeing the amendments that are brought to this board or the full legislature throughout the year. Conversely, you're not seeing all the projects that we've imposed finance reserves on or projects that came in under budget. I don't know if they're, they are never a perfect match over age versus. Um, I don't know if they're, they are never a perfect match, overage versus underage.
Right.
Um, and Tom Fries is not here, but he was here last time and, and would have a test, and I think he nodded yes that I push back on our departments when they come in with referrals to our full legislature seeking an increase. Um, so it's, there's a lot of active management that goes on. Not perfect, but managed.
Right.
But shouldn't we be able to get a, a better snapshot of what we approved to what we're in now? That, that's my, I don't have the same concern, um, especially, you know, from the, where we got back. Only fifty percent of the increases due to inflation, and the rest is due to an increase in material costs or, or costs. So shouldn't that be rebidded out for the lower, for the lower price if we can, to save the company? I, I understand that it's never been possible, but it should match it close.
I don't know what our charter requires, comparison adopted to adopted, or, I'm sorry, proposed to adopted, or, or proposed to amended?
Uh, I, I can say that we are required, and this, one of the reasons you see in this document, the narrative in the beginning for each project or status of previously programmed projects, that is required by charter. Uh, and that is the update that we're trying to give. I know that generally doesn't contain those numbers that you're referring to or, or curious about. Um, but it does include status of projects, what happened, what was completed, what wasn't completed. Um, but we can, we can take a look at that. I, I don't know that we have a perfect solution for that, uh, but it's something to consider. And we can continue to ask those questions throughout this, these series of meetings to figure out if there is a, a good solution.
Well, I mean, my, you know, I, when I first joined this board eight years ago, inflation and building costs were pretty consistent, and even if it was five years later, it wasn't that much difference. And, and you guys do build in some expected inflation, as I recall, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Obviously, things have changed in the last twenty-four, thirty months, whatever. My, my concern is that people who look at this probably won't understand that, because I should have said didn't. Yeah. When really communicating to the public what we're really doing, planning, uh, uh, some fictitious thoughts from pre-pandemic.
Yeah, and I, I, I wouldn't say that these are fictitious thoughts, pre-pandemic. Um, because as we mentioned, it, when the project gets closer to reality, there are more concrete numbers that we can use. But until then, uh, they are the best estimates of the department based on their project experience with as much inflation as we can anticipate built in, but that also can become a, uh.
Now you get a guess.
It is, and with it constantly changing, if you're constantly changing that number, it makes it even harder for all the departments to, to actually move forward and for Director Franklin to try to manage that budget, if we're constantly adjusting the out years, uh, it makes it more challenging. But I will, I appreciate the note about the amendments, and we'll take a look and see if there's something we can do there.
In fairness, the title does say adopted, so that is the one twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no misstatements being made. But you're right, there were.
There were a lot of them.
Yeah.
They're having that planned a couple of years.
And, and hopefully it's, yeah, yeah. Anyway, so.
No, 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 this is why we're here, is to, to learn about this.
Yeah.
All right, where were we?
We were. Finishing up MCC.
Yeah, yes, so MCC, so we mentioned that, okay, MCH. So Monroe Community Hospital, um, I just wanna draw attention to on the second page of this. Uh, note the green in twenty twenty-four, uh, this represents increased spending in that year. Uh, two of these are increases to existing projects, whether it be the cost estimate went up due to inflation, due to materials, uh, or just increased scope, uh, and the only other item in there is a front loader, uh, which is at the end of twenty twenty-four, that is a new project, uh, that was slated in, um, and that's the spike in twenty twenty-four that you'll know. And then, as you can see, there's a lot of green and red in here. Once again, uh, that represents changes to the prior year's funding. Uh, and you'll see that, once again, if it's sliding forward and backwards, red next to green indicates that it's going in one direction or the other. And I'll make sure to get that updated for, and distribute sometime next week. So Library Services, you'll see the spike in twenty twenty-seven, uh, and that is for, um, purchase of fleet vehicles that distribute library, books to libraries. Uh, it is just a, essentially a one-time capital purchase that needs to happen every so often, and so it's slotted into that year, which of course was planned previously, which is good, uh, but the price, uh, we've increased due to whatever mutations of reality that we have at this point, that it has probably gone up a little bit to buy, uh, several, uh, vans and, and vehicles. Uh, Aviation, so Aviation is a, uh, large department. Uh, you'll see there that there's a lot of change, specifically the drop in twenty twenty-six. Um, uh, well, first, you'll note that in Runway Twenty-eight was moved from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-four. Uh, this is an example of, uh, priorities with the airport and the state aligning to move something up, which does happen. Um, and then you'll note that the, that, uh, twenty twenty-six, I apologize, that is related to. I said so, one second, please. Uh, twenty twenty-six is related to, uh, see, there it is. Uh, several projects that were anticipated, um. There it is, last page. So there's master plan update, uh, the runway connector, and then the airport utility systems. And I'm gonna double check that, because that may actually be a mistake there, because that, uh, those numbers have not been changed, so either the green or red indications have not been in there. Oh, I'm looking at twenty twenty, I apologize. My, I clearly need better glasses. I was looking at twenty-six when I was referring to twenty twenty-five, which is what I identified as Runway Twenty-eight. So moving from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-four. Apologies for that.
Yeah.
So Pure Waters, uh, we'll move on.
Ask your question about that?
Of course, yeah.
About Aviation? Last year, we, we approved jet bridges for the airport. I'm looking in here to now, and it had something about passenger loading bridges. Is that the same thing, or is it something different?
It's the same.
The same, just different words?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But they can only do like three, four at a time.
Yeah, because they're repairing these, and we bought new ones the last time.
Yeah.
That's right. Right.
All right, just wondering.
Jetway is a specific manufacturer. It's like saying Linux, yeah.
Okay.
Or Xerox. Yeah.
So Pure Waters, um, we can move on to that. Um, you'll see Pure Waters is a bit of a, a, a model consistency in terms of what they have, uh, uh, adopted and proposed. Um, and we do have some changes, especially in the out years, you'll see some green numbers, uh, twenty twenty-nine, uh, there's, um, let's see, the biggest increase, uh, which is accounted for in twenty twenty-eight, or the large in twenty twenty-eight, uh, is sixteen point five million for pump station improvements, that's second up from the bottom on your chart. Um, that is why that jumps up from twenty-seven to twenty-eight. That was anticipated, but why it's, why it's moving forward. Sean, is there anything to add about Pure Waters?
No, I think that goes back to your point about making sure we're projecting on the future. You can see we've increased over time out in the out years. Go count for inflation and so increasing cost. Hopefully not dramatically, but at least taking it into account now.
And I mean, to Sean's credit, that is, that is based on experience from bidding projects and having them come in higher than he would like. Um, or DES having them come in higher than they would like, so.
But to Bob's credit, you see there's a red line there, so just because we asked for it doesn't mean we got it, right? We're sensitive to Bob's concerns and make sure we do what we can in different districts.
All right, so, uh, we can move on to Facilities Management, which is also a DES territories. Um, you'll see here that, uh, in twenty twenty-nine, there's that, of course, the new, which is quite higher than all the others. Um, it is a bit of an outlier in the six-year plan, uh, and that is really because there's an eight million dollar, uh, Westfall Building project in there. Uh, that building has some maintenance, uh, significant maintenance that needs to occur, uh, and so that has been slotted in the, the out year, so they can plan for that. But that is why that is substantially higher than the following years. Everything else, if you look at it, essentially stays in line, uh, with their average yearly spending, so to speak. But sometimes one project can really throw things off. All right, solid waste, uh, so once again, solid waste is pretty consistent. Um, we see here that all the numbers in solid waste have, uh, uh, gone up. Once again, that is a result of understanding that things may have increased. Uh, one note on this, uh, and this is actually where you'll see the table one summary that I mentioned before, where we listed Enterprise. Um, so if you go to the bottom of page in your CIP booklet, uh, page three, uh, the seventh line up there, it says Enterprise and it has twenty-seven million and change. If we added three point six million of this Enterprise cash, we would get to the slide which was thirty-one point five million. Uh, that is just a difference in how the material is presented that we are going to, uh, modify as we move forward. Uh, it's just a legacy issue of certain numbers were provided previously that weren't provided, uh, or were provided previously that are not provided here, and we're gonna be adding those to the future CIP, uh, moving forward. Uh, but that is the, uh, three point six million on this slide at the far end under Enterprise Cash. All right, parks, we'll move on to parks. Uh, so parks, you'll see that, uh, it fluctuates, it, it varies, um, the changes, you'll see if you go to the, 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 the next page, actually, is a good representation of the numbers, uh, changing. This is a result of understanding material costs, inflation, but also as projects need to swap in and out based on priorities and needs. Uh, you'll see that, uh, we've spent a good amount, uh, in the recent years for some parks improvements, which then ideally, uh, pulls it off those buildings and structures, which is why that number has gone down. Um, and then, uh, so this is really a fluctuating, uh, category based on need. Um, there's no one single outlier that is causing any real issue here, it's just, uh, projects changing slightly one way or the other.
I was expecting to see a bigger decline here, because of all the things we improved this year. What am I missing? Bob, is this an accounting thing, or?
Specifically for parks?
Yeah.
That was a renovation list, wasn't it? These are new projects and renovation, more renovation projects, right?
The cash capital transfers were largely, um, catch-up of deferred maintenance, where these are ongoing projects. Um, Parks Department generally has their master plan improvements for a particular park every six or seven years, so I think that's really what's being reflected here, other than the two new projects which relate to our golf courses, golf courses, um. They were coming for in the Parks Department, somewhere else might record them as an enterprise fund. Um, they are a money-making opportunity, uh, so long as, uh, interest in golfing remains.
Right.
But yeah, this just devotes extra attention to maintaining the courses so that they remain attractive to our area golfers.
So what happens when we add a new park to the county?
Oh, that seldom happens. Um. I guess it would depend on the size of the park.
Okay.
If it's just gonna be, um, a relatively small park that we are taking over from some formerly used parcel, or perhaps town. Um, it probably will go unimproved over time.
Okay.
If it's a large park, like there was, uh, interest in the old quarry over by, um, the, uh, Tennessee Constellation.
Yeah.
Club, um, that would have, if county had taken that over, that would end up being a new project in here.
All right.
Uh, just one other thing about parks, uh, in our comprehensive plan, community engagement, parks was the number one topic that came up whenever we spoke with anyone. Um, maybe that's due to, uh, you know, county park signs being at the front of each entrance. Uh, but it also speaks to users, and during the pandemic, lots of people found that outside was the only fun place they could go anymore. Uh, and so they were using them more highly than, uh, they were previously, and so um, that investment has not gone unnoticed based on my experience speaking with people across the community. We had over thirty different meetings across Monroe County to talk about the comprehensive plan, and every one of those meetings, someone brought up parks. Um, you know, sometimes they just said they love them, sometimes they said they wanted to see improvement. Um, but I think the CIP and previous years reflects that importance that we understand.
Yeah, you mentioned, uh, Rob just mentioned trails, is there, is that included in parks, like connecting different trails?
So we, we only have one, uh, really trail in Monroe County Park System, which is the Lehigh Valley Trail, which is technically titled a linear park, which just means it's a long trail. Um, but that is the only park that we currently have on the books and is planned for at this point. Um, that, you know, that is in this in terms of maintenance and use. Uh, we are working on the active transportation plan, and maybe Yishan can speak to that and how trails have come up in that process. Um, but there's no specific commitments there.
Okay.
Kind of a little bit explanation about the trail, so if you're talking about trails within the parks, they're really only allowed for, you know, walkers, right? For hiking trail, or we do have like two, uh, county parks have allowed to, uh, for recreational bicycle. Um, um, so, but that was the only, um, they have an agreement with the local bicycle through the, through the maintenance, but yeah, for the county parks, I, the, the high valley trail, it's the only multi-use trail. So it'd be useful, um, uh, for recreational and also for transportation use.
Thank you.
Yeah. As I said, with the, uh, renovation, the catch-up project question.
I think I've got a good answer.
Because that was a list of just, yeah, things that were broken and we needed, but straight away.
Right, well, and there were a lot of parking lots.
Yeah, right.
For that nature.
And then they said that they would come back, yeah, with these.
So that's why I was kinda expecting to see a decline, right, so.
But they did say they would come back with the usual. Yeah, one of the questions was that we had when they brought that up, is that taking away from the normal renovations of the, of the park? And then the answer was no, so, uh, it's just enhancing. Um, I had a question on, um, so with parks, I'm surprised I haven't asked this earlier, but, um, are beaches included with that? So in other words, Charlotte is a park, right? Is the beach renovations and is like Duran? Is Duran a county or city?
City.
That's a city, okay.
The beach.
The beaches, okay. Yeah. I was just like, you go to Charlotte, and yeah, that's beautiful.
That's county.
Yeah. I mean, you have facilities there, and then you go over to Duran, and it's like, okay, there's two porta potties, and the, the little kids there, waiting for someone to get out, you know, so there's nothing there, and it's like, uh.
It's a county park.
Yeah, that's it, right? That whole stretch is like the longest, you know, it's, it's like, that's a long beach, I mean, that's a, that's a gem. So, you know, that whole shoreline is.
One of the biggest things I ever get from constituents is they're confused about who owns what, like the Roger Robach Center.
Yeah.
Right? We, we take care of.
Yeah.
But things that we would think is part of that, we don't.
Because there's a shared, shared responsibility of certain things, or, yeah.
Like they just said, the city owns this, we own that.
Right.
Connected.
Yeah.
Can't fix that, well, it's a city project. Take care of it. Then they contacted, well, you're not a city resident, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Gets to be quite interesting.
Yeah. I just thought it was strange that we didn't, there's no restrooms over at Duran, and yeah, the plant is right there. It's like, yeah, it's a strange thing. Yeah, that's right. Need a pump station, you're right, yeah. For sure, yeah. Yeah. Okay, anyway.
No, no, all questions are good.
You heard golf, though. Station, you know where it is, yeah.
So, uh, moving on to the scenic park zoo, which is of course a part of the park system. So, moving on to the Seneca Park Zoo, which is of course part of the park system, go ahead.
You might want to note that's a logarithmic scale.
Yeah, thank you, actually. I was. So.
Like, we're actually going to spend sixty, seventy million dollars zoom now.
Yes, so that is a logarithmic scale and that is done because one of those, I believe the twenty twenty.
Twenty three is a hundred billion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so moving, so Seneca Park Zoo, as you mentioned, so that is, that scale will pull you. But you'll see here that a lot of spending has fallen off the books related to Seneca Park Zoo. And it's back to, you know, a typical maintenance and operations schedule. There's two new projects, zoo heavy duty equipment, zoo light duty equipment. That is just equipment that is necessary for zoo operations that have been put into the CIP in twenty twenty five. And I believe those numbers increased due to the anticipated cost increase of that equipment. Highways and bridges, so unfortunately, Director Fries isn't here to help us with this. But I can give you some detail on what's going on. So specifically, let's see, in twenty twenty four, you'll see that it drops. And that is because we have moved some things to some of the out years. And then highway preventive maintenance, it was moved from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty six. And then one other thing to note is, as Sean mentioned before, twenty twenty five, highway preventive maintenance number eleven, which accounts for a four point eight million dollar project. And then there is, oh, it's the next section of highway and bridges. Before we get there. But a lot of green numbers there as well, legislator Hubert, and that is to reflect their understanding of cost changes. Okay, so I want to draw your attention to Taylor Road Bridge over Rondacoy. Just note that that is not necessarily a significant project, but it has significant federal funding of one point seven million dollars. And then if you get to the summary table there, you'll see that of course changes from year to year with a decrease in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty six and increases in the other years. Once again, moving things around to manage that, those projects. Any questions on that? All right, so traffic engineering will draw your attention to twenty twenty six. So you'll see there is a large proposed spike in twenty twenty six. That is directly related to federal funding that has been allocated for traffic signal and system replacements. We have two point two million dollars of federal funding. Total project is two point seven million dollars, so really only about five hundred thousand coming from Monroe County, which is why that spike is in there. We received federal funding to replace multiple intersection traffic lights along Dewey Road to come to new standards where they're using these metal poles that then hang over rather than the wires. They're safer and more stable in many ways. And they, they last a little bit longer. And then also they're enhancing crosswalk and other pedestrian accommodations at those points. So that way pedestrians will be able to have, you know, hand signals to be able to punch there. And then the audible signal as well, if you've used upfront here, you'll notice that some of our Department of Transportation staff voices are on those, which is incredibly fun. If you know any of them.
Who's on there? According to the table. You're testing my microfiche reading ability, but I think it's an S, it's to the four hundred thirteen thousand for that project.
Yes. Yeah, so state funding of four hundred and thirteen.
There's only like a hundred, whatever.
Hundred and thirty seven thousand.
Okay. Not a half, got it.
You're right. Thank you.
Gotcha, one thirty seven, four thirteen.
George, you can see those numbers?
Well, yeah. With these.
Pass them over here.
Try to print these a little bigger next time as well. Right, um, once again, lots of green in the out years due to, you know, cost increases that they're anticipating or at least preparing for. And if no options on that, we can move to public safety. All right. So public safety and I will defer to Director Tantillo if there are specific questions. But you'll see really in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, there's matching opposite colors. That is an example of a few projects being advanced from one year to the other. And specifically, those projects are, let's see, we, I think I believe it's two. So, let's see, that was twenty four to twenty five. And in twenty four, we have a public safety vehicle replacement, which is pretty static. But we have the forensic instrumentation upgrade that moved from twenty five to twenty four. And then we also have the nine eleven phone system from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty four, accounting for two point seven five million. And if there's any specific questions, of course, I will defer to Director Tantillo or answer as, as I can.
So what's, how big is the fleet that you're replacing for the public safety?
So they oh, no, go right in. So they have a rolling basis for vehicle replacement. So they're not necessarily replacing any the whole fleet at one time. That's why it has a hundred thousand throughout those years. They schedule that amount to replace the vehicles that they can in each year. And so I don't know exactly what that gets you, but I know that's the schedule you're on.
Right, so we look at, you know, the existing fleet, see what needs to be is our highest priority to changing and what needs to be swapped out. And make that through cooperative effort with fleet maintenance and Joe Serini at the Fleet Center.
All right, so we can move on to Sheriff's Office if there are no other questions. All right, so Sheriff's Office, you'll see that that is pretty consistent throughout the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four year or from the twenty twenty three to twenty twenty eight adopted CIP to the proposed CIP. You'll see the spike there in twenty twenty five is related to jail mainframe reconstruction of twelve point five million. That is just a, a, a large project that is, there, the number is large and creates a spike, really that simple. Which is a bit shocking, but that is something that has been in the CIP for several years now.
Can we wait that long?
I don't want to speak for the sheriff.
I believe it is advancing as quickly as it can.
And is this the full scope of the jail mainframe needs or is this, this looks to be?
This design.
I'm sorry?
Just design work.
To initiate design.
Okay, so this isn't actually reconstruction, it's jail mainframe design.
Right, yeah, the project itself is called the reconstruction, but this would be the design portion of that.
And where's the build portion?
To be determined.
Be determined.
Well, yes, not all the money.
As soon as we have.
It's only twelve million.
But I remember being a.
Yeah.
As soon as we have a number that we can slot in, we will. But unfortunately, it's, it's, it's just to be determined.
We need to know a proposed cost and a proposed funding mechanism.
Any question, any other questions on the sheriff's program? Well, moving on, we can move to the debt service table and I will let finance take over this before I say anything about the next slide. But Bob or Josette, do you want to mention anything specifically about the debt projections here?
They're going up. Monroe County is in a, in a relatively good place statistically, right? Our debt service on an annual basis is roughly five, six percent of our annual operating budget. This, of course, is just tax supported debt service. Tax supported debt service. We in the finance office like to keep to sixty million dollars, if not lower. Clearly, in some of these years, most of these years, it exceeds sixty million dollars. I will suggest to you that this is not a crystal ball, right? What gets put in the CIP is what builds those debt service projections. And I think I think I can say in this group, what we put in the CIP is not exactly how projects progress. So when a pro- But all I have is the number. And I don't have a crystal ball. So I plugged the numbers from the CIP with Josette and Joe Caddio's assistants to come up with these reasonable debt projections. If you look at the twenty three or the twenty two booklet. I think if you look at twenty three booklet, the number for twenty four is like fifty eight million. But now it's only fifty five. You know, we have some tools in the finance office to help manage the timing of our the structure of the maturity schedule. And we use that, we use those strategies and those tools to make we try to make the actual debt service less than what this book shows. Again, trying to keep tax supported around the sixty million mark, if not lower.
The next slide shows that difference, right?
Yeah, so this next slide, the legend is hard to see, so I'll read it off to you. But, so the blue bar is the on existing debt. Debt service projection on existing debt, excuse me. The blue is the authorized but unissued debt. The green just above that, which you don't see for all the years, you only see it for the out years, is the proposed twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine CIP projects that is adding to that debt. And then you'll see the, there is a with black legend points and numbers that is total debt service projected in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty eight. And then lastly, there is an X on the top of each column that is the total debt service projected in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty nine CIP. So essentially tween that last one and the second last one I read is the difference between what was projected previously and is projected this year. But to Bob's point, those are projections. They are numbers that will fluctuate as projects advance or as they use strategies to control the debt. Legislator Hebert, you seem to have a question.
Well, I always have a question. Figured that out one time and you don't come up. On the debt capacity, Bob, we have a state limit, right?
We do.
Where do we stand relative to that?
Beautiful. We've exhausted roughly fifteen percent of our constitutional.
Consistent with what you said two or three years ago. Congratulations.
It's been that way for quite, quite a long time.
Yeah, yeah, no. I, I expected to hear something going up.
Can you remind me and maybe others, that this distinction between, well, what was meant by tax supported debt?
So our enterprise funds are expected to generate revenue sufficient to meet their debt service needs. So that is not quote tax supported. Solid waste, pure waters. MCH. Is there another one? Aviation. The tax supported will be, what do we got to issue a property tax for? Our road fund, our general fund, so that's that's everything that's not an enterprise fund.
And if you have a state funded or federal funded project, you're probably not going out for the bond issuance.
Absolutely not. And, and thank you for asking that question. There are one of these slides, there was a bar graph of county funds. These graphs don't differentiate because they focus in on a particular funding stream. But when we have a bridge, a three million dollar bridge in transportation that is, you know, fifty percent federally funded, twenty five percent state funded. What we generally do is temporarily advance cash to get the design work and any contracts let and then see where the project costs are coming in. And we, we may issue a bond or a note just for cash flow purposes. But we do our best for projects in that one million to five million dollar range. We try to wait for the project to complete, to know what it really costs, know what the cat cost shares are, and then we bond for the county piece.
Help me share the cost, the final cost.
Bob, even the ones that are like state funded, I think maybe the state is the most, best example of this, if they're going to cover a certain percentage, it's usually reimbursement after the fact.
Almost always.
Right, that closing, right? You have to foot the whole thing and then
Right.
You close and then you get your money, maybe. Right away.
There are a couple. We have to go back and state funded projects where we got in advance of the cash.
How do the bond rates, that's going to be more expensive for the county, then, obviously. Rates are going up, none were expected Friday.
Yep. We, uh, there's no getting around increasing yields, fortunately. This is at the same time, our bond ratings are going up, so we're getting better bids.
Yeah.
So if we had, if we were still that B double A rated, we would be spending a lot more on our projects or debt service, but our, our ratings are going up, so the delta is much smaller.
What is our rate?
We are A one Moody's double A. Double A minus S and P.
Great.
A plus Fitch.
Okay, any other questions on the debt? Then let's move to the last slide, which is just a reminder of how this process plays out for the remainder of the busy month of March for this board. So of course today, we had the presentation, ideally after this, you'll set the public hearing. We need to talk about either now or in the very near future through email, the department presentations that you would like to see. That's what I'd like to have a conversation about if there's any specific either projects or or department summaries or programs that raise questions. Who should we invite to have at either the March sixteenth or at the March ninth or sixteenth meeting, depending on their availability and your schedule as well.
To help you out with that, if you go to page two and three of your program book, there's a list of all the departments.
Thank you.
So if there if you have an idea. And, and to describe this further, I think we still have some newcomers. Who will be voting on the sixteenth, I believe?
Yes.
For, to approve the CIP plan, right, this thing. Twenty four through twenty nine. Then we will be also sending you a ballot. And that priority ballot will be just for the first year and you're going to have to prioritize that first year of spending twenty twenty four. So there's a reason why you're on this board. It is, you know, you, you might have one way of thinking and you, you have certain ideas on certain projects that, oh yes, these projects are more important and you rate those that way. And so do that, you know, do that and try to balance it out. If you have, I think it's one through five, right?
Yes.
So just a little math refresher. If you just pick ones and twos and, and some threes, we've just diminished your ones, all of your ones. If you equal them out twenty percent of, of all the, then all your ones have a significant value and all your fives have the least significant value. So divvy it out equally if you can. I know it's a, it can be kind of a hard process. Gosh, I can't, I, this project's just as valuable as this one here. So, but have a method and, and whether it's, you know, because it's funded by, you know, Fed or, you know, whatever, whatever it is, but try to break them out evenly in that process, because then. Break them out evenly in that process, because then you won't be diminishing your vote. And with that, that's all I've got on the priority ballot, so, but that's coming up, they will send that to. Via mail, you can log on the CIP and vote electronically, or you can send it, you can fax them, there's all sorts of ways to do it. Pat will go through it at the next, you know, probably the next meeting, but.
At, well, at the sixteenth, yes, but we can, we can talk about the, the, how that works, but it's, it's really, as Chairman Santos said. It's you identifying with your own worldview, your lens, you know, your lived experience, what is important to you. And reflecting that, and that's the purpose of this board. Is to help us make those decisions, because there's always more priorities and needs than any county can take, can take on. And so we need to find a way to move that forward while balancing both. What actually needs to happen, and then priorities as well that we can be flexible with.
And fortunately, since I've been on the board, the legislature, legislature hasn't needed to use the priority. Ballot, but you know, if there comes a time where finances are an issue, they, they could use that as a reference. So that's why, that's part of our charter, a requirement, so.
And then, so as we said, March ninth, we ideally will have presentations, unless this group is satisfied by today's presentation. And then March sixteenth, we'll be voting, and then the twenty third, you'll be back to your regular meeting. And then this will be submitted to the County Executive and the Legislature by May first, or excuse me.
Yeah. That's by charter, we need to have it in by April first, so I always build in an extra day at the end, this safety. Any idea on department presentations, is there, especially. Folks who are new, you know, what is this project, what, why is this eight million dollars, what is this thing here? Are there, is there anything, especially if you look at the, you know, the twenty four year, maybe the budget's twenty four year. There's something there that, you know, you're spinning through, and you're like, ah, gosh, I'd like to see what that project's about. Please ask, because, you know, you knew, some of us may have seen it, you know, Pat's probably heard it ten times already, so. But we haven't, so. You see anything in here that you'd like to have just a quick presentation, that'd be great. George, anything on your end, or?
Well, depending on when you're going to schedule it, I'm not going to be here on the night.
Okay, well, we can do the sixteen.
We, I mean, we will have Zoom ballot as well.
Yeah. Well, if you're interested.
The internet or anything.
If you're.
What we're going, George?
Yeah, the sixteenth is a.
Way to go.
You're smart, yeah. Are you interested in one?
I always want to hear MCC's plans.
Right, MCC, and I think the jail you've always wanted to hear too, but we don't have a design yet, so, right?
Yeah, we don't have a design, but.
Yeah.
I think we're hanging out there with a lot of.
Yeah, that's out there, so.
Maybe the sheriff.
But that, again, I think you've asked for the sheriff, but that point, if, if they haven't even coming up with a project yet, so they won't have anything to present, really, right? Rich, I'm sure, yeah, yeah, okay.
Two of the, now I can be, email you.
Oh, you can email, and then if, even if this is before, you know, give them a little heads up, obviously, but. We can plan for the sixteenth meeting too, like if you're back for the sixteenth, you want to see something. If you want to do MCC then. To see, then, then let's put that on the list, right?
We can do that.
Anyone else?
Transportation as it relates to complete streets policy for some of these projects.
So, and prefer on the ninth, maybe?
That can be that.
Okay.
D O T.
D O T on the ninth.
I'm interested in East, the East River Road project.
So that, that, that would be transportation too, right? They can just go on the night. Anything else from anybody, David, Mike?
Maybe facilities, I mean, I know that this Westfall expansion is still a ways out, but.
Yeah.
Just curious what else is on the radars.
Right.
In the CIP, but might be coming in years ahead.
Okay, got a particular date, you prefer the two of you, Sean and Mike? The ninth or the sixteenth?
I'm good with either one.
Okay, either one's fine.
If there's anyone who's considering a department coming, it's best if you can give it to us today. Simply because we've been in communications with Rochelle, and she's. Doing some work on this too, even though she's not here, and the intention is to try to get these. Emails out to the departments tomorrow.
Yeah.
So that we can give them time to get their stuff together.
Right.
But, but don't let that stop you in the next couple of days, please let us know.
Right, right, but if you're, if you're on the fence about something, it's probably better to just, you know, have them come in and talk about it, it certainly doesn't hurt.
Doesn't, no.
When we have the arrows, the green and red arrows, because.
Not till next week.
It always helps figure out where the changes are to.
Yeah. It does, it does, new project, and arrow, you know, this way or that way, yeah.
Read the book. This is a microfiche.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was handy.
Legislature Huber, do you have any desire to see DS facilities? They're, they've been requested to present, and if you're not going to be here on March nine, that might help us figure out when we offer them.
You can do the others, whenever.
Anyone else, for any departments? Let me see.
Pure waters.
Pure waters, that would be, yeah, D E S.
Yeah, we can schedule that with facilities.
Okay, there you go. Yeah. That sounds, you got two each, so. Okay, no, just one here.
Well, DS facilities, we don't have a specific date, so.
Alright, yeah. Got it.
Front load one, or.
I know, would you like to do one, both?
It could be separate days, it doesn't matter.
So we'll figure out what works for all the departments.
Are you going to be doing both, most likely, so you may want to split it up, so you're not having too much homework. I only get shot once, though.
Oh, the first.
Will you want to come on the ninth, right?
Yeah.
Good, really good, okay, alright. Um, alright, so that's item B. The next item, and a question for the public hearing, where is it going to be, is that at MCH, the, the, here, or is it going to be here? It'll be here.
Yeah.
And we have public access, people.
Part of this meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I was just wondering, I know we've done it.
I know we've done it separately in.
Various places, yeah.
But I think this is going to be part of the meeting.
Perfect, are we going to set the room up as a, this way, or maybe?
We can modify it slightly so that there's seating in case anyone shows up.
Alright, great, that's what I was, usually there's not too many people. Yeah, right. Very good. So I do need a motion to set the public hearing for Thursday, March ninth, at three PM, in this room pursuant to legal notice. In this attached. Sheet that was up at your desk. Uh, thank you, Mr. Riley.
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Reader. There is discussion on that. Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions, thank you. Uh, nice job, by the way, thank you, Patrick, and Yishan and Kim, very good.
There's a team.
Pass along to, or thanks to Rochelle as well, other business. Hearing on, our next scheduled meeting is the March ninth, here at three PM, the earlier time. And then following week, on the sixteenth, again, the earlier time, we're going to have CIP votes then. And if there's no other business, I need a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Mr. Franklin, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Have a great rest of the week, see you next week, thank you for your time.